Draft survey questions that are being developed. After that, we'll have the town planners update, followed by old and new business, and then adjournment. So hopefully, everyone has an opportunity to review the minutes of August 13th. Any comments, questions, corrections? All set? Motion then to approve as submitted?
Yes, sir.
Sue?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose? No one? Great. Okay. So, Jeanne, do you want to go over the A and R?
Mr. Childress and Mr. Pfeiffer here. I don't know if they want to. Otherwise, I can.
Cal is not here.
Oh. I'm sorry. Can't see that far without my glasses. I'm like, oh, I see two bodies over there. I can explain the plan. I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just trying.
I did, too. So I can go over the plan. So you have a plan before you that divides the property owned by Mr. and Mrs. Childress on New Boston Road, 146 New Boston Road, into their, the lot with their home on it, and then parcel A. And there's a notation on the plan that the intent is to convey parcel A to the Opakam Land Trust. So the, the home lot meets the requirements. The frontage is not being changed, and parcel A is noted that is not a buildable lot, and that will be conveyed to the Opakam Land Trust. So since the plan meets the requirements, I would recommend that you endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, we have a motion then to approve the A and R.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose? No one? Very good. All set.
Thank you.
You want to sign it now? Do they want to take copies of them?
I'd better give it to Carol.
To Carol?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure who's recording.
All right.
Oh, here she is.
Well, she's here in time to pick them up.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I'll be right back.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay. So next is the update on the housing production plan.
Yes. So in your packet, you have what was the Housing Partnerships meeting agenda from their July 24th meeting? And you also have a summary of what was discussed at the meeting. I just really want to keep you aware of the housing plan process as we go through this, since this board ultimately is the board that approves that plan. So I provided that for your information. And as you can see, we're going to begin work on our housing plan. We will have a comprehensive needs assessment, so we'll be looking at demographic data, and we will develop projections for future housing needs. And this is for, really for all types of housing. So obviously, part of the focus will be on affordable housing and working towards achieving our 10% goal, but it could also be market rate housing, or housing for families, or young professionals, or assisted living, or, you know, we get calls nearly every week now with people that want to put what they're calling granny pods, or, you know, small cottages to take care of family members. So I'm hoping what comes out of this is kind of a robust plan that gives us a blueprint for moving forward with some actions to potentially change some zoning bylaws, to make them more housing friendly, and to, you know, try to just work to have a diversity of housing types in, in the community. So I'll keep you updated as we go along. And the Housing Partnership is meeting on September 18th with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. And that evening, we're hoping to develop our housing survey that will be posted on Survey Monkey, and we'll be trying to get the word out to all residents to take that survey. And I'll go to the senior center to speak over there, and we will be giving assistance to those seniors who maybe don't have access to a computer, or actually, anybody in town that doesn't have access to a computer will be able to fill out a paper copy and get it back to us, and we will input that data for them. So I've provided you with a copy of a draft survey. Actually, this was a survey that CMRPC developed for Sutton. And most of the surveys for housing studies are really pretty similar. I don't want to say you can take one from any town and use it, but a lot of the questions are very general. But I wanted to send this to you to see if you had any ideas for some additional questions that were not in this, that I can bring back to the meeting on the 18th. So I didn't know if anyone had anything they wanted to provide tonight, if they had any ideas for additional questions, or if maybe in the next couple of days, you want to email me if you think of potential questions that are not on here. And I'll be doing some research as well in the next couple of days. And our meeting on the 18th will be at 5:30 PM if anyone wants to attend. Obviously, it's a public meeting. You're more than welcome to attend.
Yeah. I wondered if the, the meeting on the survey might have been double-sided. I think we're missing like some of the pages.
Missing half of it.
Yeah. It goes to like one and two on here, and then...
Oh, yes. Mine, too.
Looks like it might have been went all by itself, so...
Oh, gosh. Sorry.
The printer auto does that, and I probably...
Yes, I have it every other page as well.
Yeah.
I will get you better copies.
Yeah. You can always give any information to you if you have any suggestions.
Right. So we'll email out the full survey tomorrow, and if you can all take a look at it, and if you think of any questions that aren't on there, or maybe think there's a question that's great, but maybe it should be worded a little bit differently for Sturbridge, I'm happy to take any of your input. I apologize for the half survey. So we hope to get the survey finalized on the 18th, and then we'll be talking about ways to get the word out there about the survey. So, you know, if any of you belong to, you know, any churches or other organizations where you go frequently, we'll probably give you some flyers and ask you to put them up just to get the word out with the link, and we'll leave a stack at the library, at the Town Hall Center Office, Senior Center, anywhere else that you can think of that would allow us to put a flyer. Let us know, and we'll get those out.
Very good. Sue?
Is there a tax bill or floor remodel coming out?
No, we were trying to, we were kind of thinking along those same lines, but there wasn't anything that we could think of that was coming out as quickly as we would need it to be coming out. So I know with the open space plan, we were able to put things in the census when it went out, so that worked out great. So, but, so we're just kind of brainstorming ways to get it out, really without a budget to get it out there.
Right. Yeah. I have a couple of questions, too.
Sure.
I just don't know what it says under action plan.
What page is that?
They're not numbered. It's second to the last before the survey.
Oh, the...
Under action plan?
Yep.
The second, the clear dots?
Yep.
I'm just wondering, what is, for, can you explain that whole section to me? What are all those mixed-use, transit-oriented, adaptive reuse, cluster development?
Oh, sure.
Infill development? What does all that really mean?
Yeah. So, so really, these are all kind of like sustainable development principles. So, for example, infill, if you remember when we worked on the zoning bylaws for the commercial tourist district, so we talked about the possibility that there may be lots that are kind of underutilized, that could support a little more development, or maybe there's a vacant lot within that strip. So that's infill. We kind of want to fill in where we can before we go out into, you know, like greenfield development, raw vacant land. So fill in where we can, usually in areas that have infrastructure readily available, sidewalks, public water and sewer. Maybe you can walk to the senior center, or you can walk to school if we allowed it. We don't allow it, but maybe. So that kind of thing is infill. Cluster development, think of as our open space residential development. The bylaw that we just updated that allows you to create residential neighborhoods with a variety of housing types and not necessarily traditional subdivisions. It could be townhouses or condominiums, and the roads can be, excuse me, the roads could be varied in there. They could be private ways that are maintained by the association. The, excuse me, homes usually use up less of the land, and you leave more of the land as open space.
Okay.
So that's that. The, excuse me, one second.
Adaptive reuse?
Adaptive reuse? Think about that as the mill on Holland Road.
Okay.
So you had, if they were going to reuse that existing building, that would be adaptive reuse. It was an industrial building, and we're going to convert it to housing or mixed use.
Yeah. And in that area, didn't we, we allowed larger square foot properties if they were in a building like that?
Right.
So it allowed them to have, you know, more space if it was going to be, if it was in an existing building.
Right.
We did that on the brewery thing and that kind of stuff, too.
Yes. Exactly. And then, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Transit-oriented housing, we don't have a lot of transit, so that doesn't really apply here. You know, they brought it up with the pie in the sky idea that someday, we may have public transit, but, you know, we don't have a bus station, or train station, or any kind of public transit. Excuse me, you have the senior van that you can arrange for transportation, but we don't, we're not really near a big transit hub, or, you know, have anything like that. Mixed-use development, again, think of the commercial tourist district where you have, you know, restaurants and retails and offices, and then maybe you have residential in the same building. So it's one building with a mixture of uses. Inclusionary development is where you are developing housing for affordable housing, and if you are creating, say, a subdivision, and you are not proposing affordable housing, you may put money into a fund that would go towards creation of affordable housing in the future. And we don't have an inclusionary zoning bylaw at this time, so, but it's basically, you're paying to offset cost of affordable housing if you are not, if you are doing a development and you're not doing your part to create some affordable housing as part of the mix of that development.
Is that something that we may be concerned about?
We looked at it years ago, and it just didn't really seem feasible at the time. We didn't really have a clear path forward as to, you know, how that would really work, or if we'd actually be creating enough, you know, developments. And we didn't have, I want to say, a housing trust where you could put those funds in at the time. So there's more homework that needs to be done. We'll reevaluate it again as we go through this process to see if it's something that seems like it makes sense.
When you mention those granny pods that you're hearing a lot more about, are they on someone's existing property?
Right.
Or being put into a neighborhood?
No, they'd be put on somebody's existing property, so for your in-laws, or your child, or whatever it may be to...
Those tiny houses?
Could be. It could be.
Could be anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's really separate from like the in-law apartment things?
Yeah.
Where you had like...
Right. It would be, well, it would still be part of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, but right now, our accessory dwelling unit bylaw honestly is quite restrictive. It allows for, you can have an accessory dwelling unit in your home, but it has to be part of your existing home or in addition to it. It can't be in an accessory structure. So say, you have a large barn, all of a sudden, your daughter needs to move home, you say, gee, part of this barn would make an awesome accessory dwelling unit for my daughter so she can kind of get back on her feet or whatever. You can't do it, because our bylaw says it has to be in part of your existing main home. It can't be in an accessory structure. And it can only be 25% of your existing structure, or 600 square feet, whichever is less. So if you think about that, we have a provision in our zoning bylaw that said, says the smallest a living unit can be is 750 square feet, but yet, our accessory dwelling unit, we're only allowing you to have 600. And so when I first proposed accessory dwelling unit bylaw years ago, it was shot down. I think people, I don't know what they thought, that they were afraid of what it was going to bring in. It was shot down. This particular version was by citizens' petition, and it's quite restrictive. I think we really need to look at that as we go forward.
Yes. I would agree. As times have changed and needs are different.
Right.
Thank you for your...
Sure. That was helpful.
In the goals section, in the first bullet point, you say town staff will work to develop affordable housing goals. What, so what is the ultimate goal? Is the ultimate goal to revise potentially, or suggest revisions to the bylaw?
It's, really, the goal is to update our housing plan, which was developed in 2008, I believe, was the last time we updated the housing plan. So it's really to update that plan based on current demographics, current trends, and current needs, and to develop goals based off of the needs that we find when we start to do the surveys and the analysis.
So, so, okay. So for the timeline, you say eight to 12 months to complete the project?
Oh, right.
Is, is the completion of the project, getting the survey out, collecting results, computing results?
And developing that plan.
It's all the way to the end?
Right. It's drafting that document that will contain within it a set of goals and action items to achieve the goals that we found were needed, similar to a master plan, but it solely focuses on housing.
Anything else? Great. Very good.
Charlie? Is, is this restricted to town residents, this survey?
Well, it's pretty...
And the reason I ask that is I was just wondering if maybe you could come up with a separate survey for realtors?
Oh, that's a good idea.
To see, you know, what people are looking for when they come into a realtor's office, the size houses, you know, landlords and everything, and we, you know, we know, we've already been told that there's a shortage of condos, so we know that as a fact. And we can see in the paper, the houses are being sold left and right. I mean, I know several people that didn't even list their house that was sold.
I know.
They're going so fast.
They are going really quickly.
So I just wondered if there's a...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
If there's some kind of survey we can send out to the realtors to see what they have to say.
That's a good idea. I'll, I'll talk to Emily and Trish that I'm working with at CMRPC.
Might be able to get some valuable input from them, you know?
I think you're right. And then, as far as you asked about, is this one for residents? I thought your second part of that was going to be, how do we know that it's someone who lives outside of town filling it in? We don't really know that, but when we do our surveys, we ask them to put in their zip code, or which portion of town they live in. We'll kind of, sometimes we have them, you know, select an area on a map, try to do something to, and then we have another out of town, because you will get some people that are out of town that fill it out, so...
Thank you.
Very good. Sounds like it's going along well. Very good.
Full survey will go out tomorrow and send any feedback.
Terrific. Thank you. Next item is the town planner update.
So, not too, too much. I just wanted to update you all on the process for potential adult-use marijuana retailers. So Janay just provided you with a copy of the policy that the Board of Selectmen adopted on September 3rd. So the first part of this is the negotiation of a host community agreement, and that's what this policy reflects. So it gives the procedure and the documents that need to be provided by potential applicants to the town administrator. And once the host community agreements are negotiated, which actually, the town administrator is the chief negotiator, and so he's working with, he has the ability to work with whatever team he deems appropriate at that time. So to start the process, it's myself and town council, and we have scheduled meetings with all of the potential marijuana retailers for the, I believe it's the third week in September, the week of the 23rd, I believe, we're meeting with everybody for the first initial meeting. And at that time, they'll be bringing in these documents that need to be provided, and we'll be working on the language of the, the host community agreement. And Nicole Costanzo from KP Law will be assisting us with that process. And then, once the host community agreements are negotiated, the potential applicants will be presented back to the Board of Selectmen with the agreements that have been developed, and the Board of Selectmen will make their selection as to which ones may move forward, or to, I should say, as to which host community agreements they will endorse. So they can, as you know, our bylaw allows for two potential adult-use retailers, and there's also the existing medical marijuana facility has the ability to convert. So at question is whether HEAL's restriction on conversion will be lifted by the Board of Selectmen, and if they'll grant them one of the two, and then just select one other, in which case, we'd only have two, or, excuse me, if they'll select two and still allow HEAL to convert, in which case, we could have three. So that really is up to the Board of Selectmen to decide. And then whichever ones they sign the host community agreements with, they will be able to apply for special permits with you. I'm sorry, it's so dry in here tonight.
That's all right.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
I think it's pretty clear. Anyone have any questions or anything? There's another community outreach meeting tomorrow night.
There is. I was just going to go through that list if I can stop coughing and crying here.
Yeah.
So you'll recall, HEAL held their community outreach meeting on May 30th. CPC held theirs on August 26th, and Catherine Trifilo has provided me with a link to the audio of that meeting, so in case you weren't able to attend, I'll be sending that to all of you so you can listen to that. And 253 Organic, or 253 Pharmacy will be holding their host community agree, uh, community outreach meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Public House. The Herb Company, which is the final, I haven't heard anything about, and community outreach meeting at all from them yet. I will be attending the meeting tomorrow night. I believe Mr. Blanchard is attending as well.
Town Planner, yep. Good. Very good. Okay.
And, let's see. Our next meeting is the 24th. We'll have the Sawdust Cafe waiver of site plan, and that is the cafe that I told you about at our last meeting. He did file, so we'll be having that. And then, Mr. Meacham sold his property at 51 Technology Park to DeLeo Gas, and they are proposing some potential changes, which will necessitate a modification of the site plan. So that will probably be at an October meeting.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Good thing, because I'm crying.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Next on the item on the agenda, we have old and new business. Russ, any old business?
Oh, my gosh.
Uh, no, no old business.
Jim?
No.
Yeah?
None.
Sue?
No.
None?
Nope.
Okay. New business?
The sign in front of where Sawdust is going, they talked to you about increasing the signage, because I heard there's an eye doctor going in there also.
Oh, there is. Thank you for reminding me of that.
The sign looks kind of small out front there. I don't know...
No, it's actually, meets the requirements. So Crabtree and Evelyn used to have a panel on there.
Yeah.
So the optical shop will have a panel. They've actually come to design review already today, as a matter of fact, or yesterday, excuse me, and that was approved. And so there'll be another panel where the antique shop used to have a panel, that the Sawdust Cafe, and then they're proposing a sign on the building as well. And thank you for reminding me of the optical shop. The Crabtree and Evelyn is now going to be an optical shop.
Oh, good.
Yep.
Very good.
And, well, the campground, you know, I know there's some discussion on the sewer plant, sewer line at the campground. So he'll have to come back in for a modification, right, to the site plan?
Yes. If something happens with that, I don't know if that is something that is actually in the works, to be honest with you, or, I know it was mentioned at one time about the potential of running a sewer line to the campground, but I'm not sure.
There was an article in the paper this morning.
Oh, there was? Okay. Well, the paper knows more than I do, I guess.
It appears, I think, that they found that the repairs and upgrade that they needed for their onsite treatment system was pretty expensive.
Right.
And, and then you had the ongoing costs. So one of the plans, I think, that he had discussed was a pressure line from the campground up Farquhar Road to the Farquhar Road pump station. And I think that, you know, that was, you know, one option, and it certainly suits all his needs. And I believe at the Board of Selectmen, they discussed the fact that, well, would this be a good opportunity to try to get the sewer down Route 15?
Oh, okay.
And he indicated, I think, from at least the news story, that he was interested in paying the additional money that would be required for that. But I don't know if anyone's talked to you about, you know, the potential for other, you know, development or sewer use down there? I mean, you know, things have changed with the zoning a little bit, and then also, you know, where things have filled in and haven't filled in, so...
Right.
I don't know whether or not there would be a need for you and the planning board to provide some input on what the potential, you know, for that sewer might be.
Yes. I did sit in on one meeting quite some time ago, but I hadn't heard any more. And I did provide the analysis that I had done for the Route 15 zoning work that we did, that talked about, you know, what was on each parcel and what was still available for potential development, and provided that to the town administrator.
Okay.
If I read that story in the paper correctly, the Board of Selectmen didn't uphold his offer to do that. They voted it down.
Oh, no, there was no vote on anything like that. This is just...
Oh, I thought it said one address, the vote for, two voting against.
Oh, no, there was no vote. This was just a discussion.
There was no vote taken.
I think that, you know...
Support and not support. More questions needed to be answered.
Yeah. It was pretty preliminary. I think the way Jeff Bridges had presented it was just really, kind of the way I just explained it, that those were the discussions that he's had, I think, with the, with the owner of the RV park.
Right.
And, and so they just wanted more information, I think, as to what it would be. And so I think any information you have, you know, we could share as to what the potential development might be would certainly be helpful. I know that they've had, you know, Tag and Bond looking at the costs and what the potential for sewer usage might be there, so you might want to, you know, if you haven't seen it already, get the information that they've had to update that and see how it compares with what your knowledge has been. Has anyone from Tag and Bond reached out to you for any of that?
No. Tag and Bond was in on the meeting that I sat in on, but I haven't been asked anything or seen the copy of the Tag and Bond report.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it certainly is, it becomes a pretty big project. I mean, I think they were talking over a million dollars just to run the pressure line to Farquhar Road, and possibly up to two and a half or more for the sewer line down there. And that, I think, was a six inch, when originally, they were talking about an eight inch, and then there's a question of pressure versus gravity. I mean, certainly, it has to be pressure at some point, because it's all lower than, you know, where the tie-in is, so I think it, you know, something that...
The town engineering people talked about?
What's that?
They, they reviewed the plan for the sewer system, the tie-in bond?
Well, I know there was some discussion that they were looking at it.
As far as the sewer.
But we haven't seen any of the numbers, not that we need to, but I would hope that Jeanne might want to, you know, be able to get some input on that.
Yeah. And it's also my understanding, there's some concern about tie-in, because in our plans, we have tie-in for a single resident, a condo, industrial, but we don't have it for an RV.
Oh, the fees, you know?
Okay. But I know that, it's my understanding, that there would be one central place for tie-in from within the RV site into the system going down 15. And that the engineers and everybody have taken a look at it, and this is what I learned by viewing the Selectmen's meeting.
Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah. I think one of the issues regarding, you know, that question of, you know, the capacity from, from each unit, is that a sewer bylaw, you know, does have flows for single-family So, I, I think it, you know, something that...
Engineering people talked about?
What's that?
They, they reviewed the plan for the sewer system, the tie-in bond.
Well, I know there was some discussion that they were looking at.
As far as the sewer.
But we haven't seen any of the numbers, not that we need to, but I, I would hope that Jean might want to, you know, be able to get some input on that.
Yeah, and it's also my understanding, there's some concern about tie-in, because in our plans, we have tie-in for a single resident, a condo, industrial, but we don't have it for an RV, okay? But I know that, it's my understanding, that there would be one central place for tie-in from within the RV site into the system going down 15, and that the engineers and everybody have taken a look at it, and this is what I learned by viewing the Selectmen's meeting.
Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, I think one of the issues regarding, you know, that question of, of, you know, the capacity from, from each unit, is that a sewer bylaw, you know, does have flows for single-family houses, they have for apartments and things like that, but they don't really have a flow determined for, say, RV pack units. And so, that's something that could, I'm sure, be negotiated. I'm sure there's plenty of data on what kind of flow you get from that, and that would be the thing that, you know, really, you know, creates, you know, the formula for what the tie-in fee would actually be for this development.
Well, apparently, it was brought up, that'd be $17,000 to $33,000 gallons, and that was figured out by Tag and Bond for the, for the flow?
For the park.
Flow rate, rate from the RV park.
We must have accurate flowage, because they were going to build an onsite wastewater treatment facility, so we would have to have that for the, when they filed with the DEP for the onsite.
Right. So, a lot of the work's been done. It just needs to be brought together, so more, it can go forward, whichever's determined to be best for the town.
Very good. But my question, my point is, he would still have to come back for modification of the site.
For modification, right, right. And I'm assuming with conservation as well?
And why would that be?
That's it.
So, I better understand.
Um, because it's not what was proposed on the original plans that were approved, and if you're running sewer lines, you could be working close to some resource areas again, so there could be additional excavation that wasn't accounted for with the original site plan. That would need to be evaluated.
Yeah, most likely, you would think, though, that, you know, whatever he was planning on to get whatever the sewer collection was to the treatment plant?
Right, exactly.
Would be where he would go, and then that would be where the connection is. I mean, I don't think there'd be much change.
You would assume so. I don't think there'd be much change.
I don't think that would be...
Change to the rodeo.
Right, I think it would just be elimination of the...
I think our review would be pretty minimal if that's the case. I mean, really, you're just talking about now running a line into where the plant would have been, so...
And if you don't have a sewer plant building, that gives them more space to put in more campsites.
Yeah.
Right.
So, it could be adding more campsites.
Yeah, that, right, exactly, and that would definitely be changed.
It did look like he did some work on that. I thought, driving by, it looked like that building was...
He did start to do some work on it, yes.
Upgraded.
I don't know. I haven't seen it, so...
Just driving by, I noticed that. Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim? Any new?
Nothing.
Sue? No?
All set. Thank you.
Nope.
Great. Okay, so we know when the next meetings are? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Great.